I would like to introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not seeing clarity here, we'll go straight to public input. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council this evening for public input? Seeing none, we'll move to the amendments for the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, move for approval of the minutes from the June 2nd, 2014, American Council meeting.
Sure moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passed. Let's move on to the mayor's report, and I have several things listed here, I'll just take them in order of how I have written them down. The first one is, and I'm proud to introduce Karen Stugelwoller, who is now the Mayo Sunsturm Conference Center Manager. Karen, if you stand up and maybe come up to the microphone, just give us a quick words of wisdom from you.
No pressure here. I'm very happy to be here, and I'm just delighted to be working for the city of Lindesburg in this new capacity. So, I'm looking forward to the days ahead, we have a lot of things scheduled throughout the rest of the summer. I feel like I'm Freddie Waller a little bit right now, but we'll sure make some headways soon enough. So, thank you for this opportunity.
We're very excited to have you on board, and welcome to the city of Lindesburg, so.
Thank you.
Next item I had is just a thank you for those that were involved in the July 4th celebration. It was a great celebration in the park, and those that had the opportunity to attend, I think would agree with that. Again, just a thank you to those people that made it possible. Tomorrow night at the Old Drive at 7:00, there's 150th Celebration Idea Meeting. Please join in, come with your ideas on that, a chance to drink some coffee and talk about the 150th, which is 2019, approaching us fast. Next item has to do with the Meadowmark Trail. I don't know if anybody's been down the road there, the River Bridge Road, if you look down the trail, there are limestone buildings now on the first mile, which is very exciting. It's open to the first mile, the about quarter mile out or a little over, there's the where it's up along the river there, and you know, where maybe you can get out and see over the river and stuff. It's a very exciting time for them. They stay in contact with me regularly on that, and I can tell you they're working right now on the next two miles, which should get them out to Shawnee, I believe, and that should be in the wall. At this point, looking to get some limestone down, and then they'll get the decking down and the rain is on the bridges. I understand there's some, you know, almost 100-foot bridge, and smaller bridges out there, long bridges they call them, and that kind of thing, that'll make that area even more exciting. Please jump on, use your bikes, walk whatever it might be, I understand it's getting a lot of use already, so that's very exciting, I think, for us with the Meadowmark Trail coming to the meeting. Thanks to the city crew and their cleanup of the private store, not sure if we talked about that last time, but it was a great job and really appreciated by all. Now it's time to get out your calendars. There's a great plan now, we want to talk about a strategic plan retreat. There's a couple of options here for September 19th and 20th, or October 10th and 11th, and I think at this point what I'll do is ask Greg to address those, he has some other things he wanted to bring up with it.
There's a potential public on October 10th and 11th, the 11th, which is a Saturday, both of these days are a Friday evening and a Saturday. On the 11th is the start of the Kansas Municipalities Conference, which will be in West Spotsk and Karen Jerry, and that runs through Monday. We've historically done a retreat, an extended retreat, about once every three years. The past two have been in West Spotsk, dinner one evening and a day of planning the following day, to begin the development of the next strategic plan. The strategic plan we currently have actually ran through 2012, time to develop the next one. Actually looking at changing locations to go to Manhattan this year, also facilitators, looking at using jogging line, it would be a process of not only planning with city council, but then also half-day planning session alongside here with department heads, and upon the completion of both of those two steps, would be bringing the department heads and city council together for review of where everything is. For the development of the plan, final draft, or then go through the process of being reviewed and approved. Other than that, let's see if they have any questions. Those are the two days, there's a potential conference on the October day.
So let's look at 19, 20, does that work for this for September 19th and 20th?
Oh, yeah.
Around the room, is that a good date for everybody? Your participation is greatly appreciated and expected in this process, so that we have a good clear strategic plan to guide us going forward in that. So, looks like the 18th and 20th, no, I'm sorry, 19th and 20th are the dates. Please put that on your calendar now, and try to very much keep it clear for us to get that. We'll give additional information on rides and that, and getting there, and hotel and that.
And then with the department heads, is that then?
No.
Or if that's not there?
No, no.
We're talking about Friday evening, Saturday, six to eight hours on Saturday, and returning home after that.
This will be a retreat for city council.
Be like in noon or four o'clock, if I recall?
I'm sorry.
Friday evening.
More like noon or more like?
It'll be later.
Later afternoon.
Later afternoon, yes.
Get there for a meeting together, a chance to just socialize.
Probably somewhere between 4:00, 4:30, somewhere in there.
Start that process and then that.
Try to get a date nailed down, then we'll kind of start plugging in some of the details on what's happening on those particular dates.
Any other questions there, strategic plan retreats? Keep your calendars out, let's talk about budget session during July, and I'll turn again to Greg on this.
Well, if we would like to have, we'd be staff, or at least Larry and I, I'm not sure, all the staff, excited about it, but a budget work session on either July 21st, 22nd, or 23rd. The reason being is we just finally got valuation numbers from the county today.
Can you hint, are you smiling or are you not smiling today?
Well, it was, I would say, quick summation, everything was flat, overall was flat. Of course, the way they, the sheet that we did isn't a true assessment of valuation, it's more and more plugged into a budget computation worksheet, and Larry can address that better than I can, but I doubt he's done that yet since he had a council meeting tonight. I would say that quick summary was flat.
The budget session you're requesting, Greg, is that an evening session and not?
Yes. Oh, I would say at least a couple hours, plus the additional item I would like to throw out that evening that we have never discussed.
So, is that eight, six, and nine, be like a surprise at the end?
No, it'll be right after, right after.
I guess like ice cream or something, so.
No, but we can do that.
Six to lap on those nights that work for you, the 21st is going to be a rough night for me, I would prefer the 23rd, I don't know how to watch that.
What evening is the 27th building?
Not very.
What day is the 23rd?
The 23rd is a Wednesday. July 25th. So the 23rd is a Wednesday, oh my god.
Just doesn't matter.
That whole month, I mean, that whole week.
Two days.
Two weeks, correct. Neil, what works for you?
Three weeks.
23rd, that can be on the 23rd.
23rd.
23rd, 23rd. 23rd. Appears that everybody but David, story of mine, will be there that night, so we'll try and pull you in, I won't make a surprise. The big reveal, you know, it's like. Hopefully.
6:00 PM.
6:00. 6:00 PM. Snacks, are there no snacks?
I'll figure something.
We'll figure something out here in this room. Right, right, 3:00 AM, 3:00 AM, yeah, okay.
Great.
Next item is the National League of Cities, Greg talked about it, it is Friday report. It's in Austin, November 18th to the 22nd. And looking around the room, I think Neil, you have not gone, you are, you probably haven't been gone, is there anybody else who hasn't gone? So, we would like to get here, and should be going, you guys.
When is that, eight AM?
November 18th to the 22nd in Austin. And then after that, we can offer another very good effort. So, but the key here is the early deadline, and we would like to take advantage of the same, some registration dollars in July 18th. So that's 11 days from today. 18th is on a Friday, so.
What is that session?
It's a National League of Cities, there's the Kansas Municipal League of Cities, and then there's the National League, and it's a chance to hear the national level that's going on, and also interact with other small communities around and figure out things that way, so that's a good process. So the 18th is a Friday, please get back to Jerry by the 16th, which is a Wednesday, give time to, for us to make other plans, if you wish to be on the alternate list, they would like to go, if they're still, please make that also known to Jerry on that day. Any other questions about the National League of Cities? Rider R R V is 18, 19, 25, 26, all over this year, and a good time to be in the park and see the after car show on August 2nd, and as always, remember to be silent.
Then will we have council in September?
Typically, it's by ordinance the day after the holiday. Yes.
All right. Are there other questions for the mayor report?
Are we adjusting the August city council meeting?
Yes, we would like to, staff would like to.
Staff would like to adjust the August city council meeting, thank you Betty for bringing that up.
Do you know the other meeting?
Yeah. What would you like to adjust that to, staff?
Our normal meetings, August 4th, I'd like to change that to August 11th, for budget purposes, we need all publication deadlines, and time between publication and hearing, if it's changed, we would also have a hearing that evening at 6:00 PM on the budget.
Just to give you an idea, because we have the budget work session July the 23rd, I have to have it to the newspaper two days later, in order for it to get in the paper the next week, to meet the requirements.
So the 11th helps you out?
So the 11th helps us out, otherwise, we would have to have it to the paper a week prior to the budget work session.
Okay. With this opportunity to help there, you have, is there any concerns for the 11th? You need motion, second?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Sure moved.
Moved in second. Any further discussion on moving the August council meeting to the 11th? All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Other other items under the mayor's report, which I forgot, otherwise I'm going to move to appointments. We have two appointments today, one of them is for the volunteer ambulance service. Tim, do you wish to address some of this appointment, give us a quick background?
I think you have it in front of you.
Tim says we have it in front of us, does everybody else talk to that? The name of the members are Ashley.
Alicia.
Alicia, thank you. Shoski and Tiffany Hope. Two members that joined, thank you. Thank you.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Sorry.
Moved in second, if you're treating members of the ambulance service, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next appointment we have is from the CDB, Molly, would you like to bring us anything for that?
I just want to say that we are looking at another individual that would fulfill the state's requirement of lodging being on this ward, and this will be an individual that will fill in a term for someone else, as we made some changes during the Sunsturm Board transition, so I lost a board member during that time, and we will get in this individual to fulfill that that term.
On the CDB?
On the CDB, or is that?
His name is Ash?
Ash Alom, yes, that's the form.
Further, is there a motion approved?
Motion for recognition approval?
Or second?
Second.
Any discussion on this appointment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. July meetings, we've added to that a little bit tonight, keep in mind, Recreation Advisory Board, Golf Course Advisory Board, and Tree Board, and Conference Center Advisory Board. I'm just going to ask to make sure the staff and those to notify, make sure in writing ahead of time, or email what we do about the gunfire members, to make sure they're handled, and give them plenty of time ahead of time to be at those different board meetings going forward, so. Any other questions there, you can see in the minutes, committee meetings when they are. Any questions on meetings? Yes?
No.
No. August council meeting, we've already taken care of. Are there any others here?
I got it all.
I got it all. Let me check my numbers here, I did do it all. Just seeing if you guys are listening. Plating is done.
There's nothing for plating, so.
Let's move right into committee reports, start with the Administration and Finance.
First item is ordinance number 4872, vacant property registry.
We've discussed this at a couple committees for a couple months. We'll try to narrow it down to a draft ordinance that I would like a little more input and discuss on. And specifically, I'd like to have a conversation with city attorney, if you have any questions. Our concern with staff is enforceability of the ordinance as it's written, Bill, I don't know if you've been able to review the I O S draft.
Yeah, I've got some questions about whether it is enforceable or not, and we'll get to that in a minute.
The other topic is, I would like to add a section on penalties, I haven't done that yet, I'd like to look for a bill on penalties, and that would be a specific penalty for failing to abide by in terms of this course. Another question I have, and I would like to try to nail down, and that is the fee, that's the registration fee. This is bigger than anything that I know of in the state of Kansas, I think the city of West Spotsk still charges $25 to register a vacant property, we're looking at substantially more, $500 for the first two years, and then the other, so this is quite a fee. And so that, I've opened it up to council questions, and questions for Bill or?
Potentially in order, first place, I'll build this conversation, is it enforceable or not, in fact, I kind of need to talk about fees or anything else, I think, so.
Well, I think it's still up in the air, there have been, I've talked with the legal municipalities, legal staff about this, there have been some cities that are starting to adopt these, I don't know about the earliest one you found out about here, but apparently in the last few years, there's been a few of these that have been enacted, I don't think any of them have ever been challenged to the point of taking them to the court appeals in the Supreme Court. So, I guess you can take the fact that, well, until they are held to be unconstitutional, and they're okay to do, because it's certainly within the city's right to pass whatever ordinance it's a vision to. I do agree with Gary, I think when we're talking this type of registration fee, that seems punitive, I mean, given the purpose of what we're trying to do here, so I'm encouraged to consider something that is more in line with record keeping, bookkeeping, and trying to post a fine and so on, correct?
So, with that, council, is there further discussion, and what Bill said as our attorney, that it hasn't been challenged yet, but there are developing, communities developing plans such as this, is your, are we exempt to still step out and try and bring about change into our vacant buildings and that, that we do not have the power to do in the past, or are we comfortable setting out doing that, unless the question called council persecution, we should go?
Well, I think, you know, discussions have been two phases, one is lost revenue from the city, we were bringing utilities past those doors, but we're not collecting utilities. And so, for communities that are struggling with that, pay more bills, that's one issue. The other is, what does it do to a neighborhood? And so we talk about, in, one of the strengths of Lindesburg is, we do have nice neighborhoods, it's a nice community to live, but if your house, if the houses around you are empty, then what's that mean? So I do understand what Bill is saying, $500 is maybe somewhat punitive, but maybe a hundred, or, I don't know, I'm not wedged anything there, but I think we've got to get people's attention and have them understand why we're even looking at this issue, and I think it's an important issue.
See, another issue is, is the need for housing in Lindesburg, and there are homes that are vacant, that if they were available.
But if it's still very property, you know, it is still very personal property, and if they choose not to want to have somebody else living, they're lost, that's improved, but it also might provide them to move that, to get off the houses.
I think you also have to look at the, put it in perspective, in really how punitive it is, there are a number of houses in town that where someone has passed on, a house has been left there with furniture, and loggings, and goods in it, and they just sit there, and the family has not moved to go in and dissolve, or dispense with the goods, and the house sits there. And if you were to take, it's like using storage, I don't know what a storage building costs per month, but if you look at 10 months or 12 months of a storage building, that's a pretty significant fee. The other thing is, you take, you take one of these houses, you have a house next door that you're taking pretty good care of, and then you have really good rain, like we've had, where the grass takes off growing like mad, these places don't get usually kept up like they would be like other places, or places that's occupied, so, you know, these things you can get out of hand pretty quickly. And I think, you know, while we don't want to punish people, we certainly want to get their attention, and let them know that the impetus is to get these houses either back on the rental market, sell them, or whatever, certainly a vacant house is a great place for bad things to happen, whether it be animals, or it be young folks being mischievous, they're not good things to have happen, and they're not, when you have a house where you don't have all the utilities on, they also take on, kind of tend to develop things more prominent and develop things like termites, black mold, those kinds of things, they become a health issue. So the impetus to get these houses on a registry, and incentive to get them taken care of, I think is to be, needs to be a little stronger, but not punitive, but what that, what that is, is somewhere in that rental fee, what's it cost to rent a storage building, I think is a good benchmark to look at that.
What was your second item, your fees of one of them, again, enforceability, and then was there another?
I'd like to say families, no.
No, I agree with that, I think if you're going to try to make this enforceable, it needs to be made unlawful, nothing much like the air makes of that. I'd point out something else too, just in response to what W R mentioned, as far as time goes, you know, doing a lot of estate work is not at all uncommon for us to be vacant for a year before items clear up after somebody is deceased. The way this is currently written, after 45 days, no one's living there, technically becomes a violation, so I think you might want to look at time issues.
I think one of the things that made me a little uncomfortable when reviewing some of the proposed properties, is if there is a presumed foreclosure, that seems to me to be a little dangerous, if it's not actually foreclosure, is that a, that's a fundamental?
All right, let's take these, step by step, the first one, concern from Bill and Gary to be the enforceability question, are there any further discussions on those directly as a counselor, is it, if I'm not speaking up, I will presume that you are oriented in the direction that we want to do something with ordinance 4872?
I would say that we need to do something prior to the timeline.
Those are maybe isn't a matter, so, but the ordinance itself, you wish to do, try to move forward with something that means all specifications, okay. Let's look at the timeline then, the 45 day question, let's come down to the fee question at the same time, which was 500, a thousand, 2,000, 3,500, is there discussion purposes, Greg, on that?
Well, I would make a suggestion, is if a property is in probate or a state, I mean, it's a separate category of definition, I guess one of my issues is, the majority of vacant properties are also our code enforcement issues, that we're putting money into to try to keep those properties somewhat maintained, while at the same time trying to preserve. And it's not just residential property, we're talking commercial properties here also, so maintaining values and quality of labor, it's whether it be commercial or residential.
So under that timeline then, am I federal I, triple I, whatever you want to do there? The first one, could you have, if it's in probation, so you know, up to a one-year extension, it actually comes in, falls into the rest of the chain, 45 days and everything else, granting that one-year extension for both properties, does that sound like a solution there?
I think I'd like to see something like.
A year, I mean. That's what I said, a one-year extension.
Well, no, I.
The first year is out.
Across board, I mean, because the reality is, we're looking for like habitual issues, we're looking for regards that aren't getting loaded continually, 45 days, is that long enough to assess that?
It depends on if you're talking about April May, or November, December, as far as compliance, but I think I would agree that 45 days is probably too short, but I think with the exception of those homes that are in probate, if those properties are in probate, a year is too long.
I would think maybe just change the fees, cut everything in half, start off at 250 to 500, just cut it in half, then on number one, federal I, vacant properties for at least one year, but less than two years, and then just follow up with the rest of the timeframe that is already established.
I've got to throw out there that I think that we have all, we've talked about property earlier in life, we all see these properties around, they're all sitting there, I think a year is too long, we need to make a, make a stance on what it is, we may be referring to that, which you, you know, in the state of Kansas, we've been there before, or whatever, but I guess we can take a stance on that and put it out there, and I would exempt the I would exempt the probate for one year, and if we want to extend that forty-five to ninety days or under twenty days or something, and fix it out of the code enforcement issue, really, you know, true vacant property issue, I don't think so.
You say ninety days for a violation of code, whichever occurs first, whichever occurs first.
That's what they're saying.
Well, yes, but if you...
I think if I'm ninety days, if that's what it is, and then a one-year extension for probate, then you know what else I'm pretty much...
What about, I'm just thinking here, I have a house for sale, and there's a lot of houses that have seemed for sale in this town for a year, two years. Do they fall under that because they're vacant and for sale? So, vacant property, nobody's living in it.
If the tenant houses in the home you're in are, and you're doing all those things, like this...
But there's some people out here that are paying their taxes, and their house is in the house. There was one here, this one right here. Not here, but that's true.
It's, well, it's not there, like it's got paint, the lawns moved, windows are not broken.
I think you hold a twin thought to how you, the nature of your discussion and what you're trying to achieve. If you're trying to achieve limiting code enforcement, that's one thing. If you're trying to limit just true vacancies because of, whether limited housing opportunities or, or limited commercial property availability, that's a whole separate issue.
We're hearing this towards code enforcement.
I don't know.
I actually thought we were hearing towards vacant property and...
There you go. That's why I asked the question, what's the individual's goals?
This gets really, like, if you have a vacant house that you don't want, that you don't want to sell, you just put a price on it that nobody's going to pay, and it sits there. So, that's a dog, anybody can dodge that ball with using that stand. So, you know, I'm going to leave it, I would suggest we leave it to these folks to research and bring it back to plan.
Gary, do you have enough direction in this direction, in how it happens? Because there's obviously a round of stream, right? You know, I'm thinking vacant, you're thinking code, and, you know, I don't want anybody else to think in that, but I guess I'm just trying to, I hope that we can move this along and not get stay alive and let it sit there, you know? This is something we truly believe in, and I think it is, we need to make it, make our wishes known, and, you know, Gary, come back with the plan and follow through with it. And so, now's your opportunity, all the items, we've talked about, we've talked about fees for a situation of cutting it in half. I'm comfortable with that. I don't think anybody else has any concerns there, at least we have now. And the idea of probate, you know, one year, if it's going there, otherwise maybe ninety days, only anything after that. So, those are my thoughts.
I think the fees that have to be, there's several, if you can, I'd rather have it be a hundred dollars a month, that would sound, that would suit me different.
That's a year. So, you just cut it for a year from...
No, I'm just saying, it's what I think.
I understand it. I know you're saying a month, you're thinking, you know, that's a year, right? I don't think you're saying a hundred dollars a year, and we're saying two fifty, a hundred dollars a month, and we're saying two fifty a year.
I am a split, I'm fifty a year.
Yeah, those are, those are annual fees, I like that.
I think the biggest challenge will be trying to define the difference between a home that's legitimately up for sale and actively on the market, as opposed to one that's been abandoned and sat nobody living in it for fifteen years.
Is that definition in your hearing?
Yes.
You know, what's not addressed is if a property is actively marketed and sold, and waited for the top to come up. There is, you know, there are properties that are on the market, Bill, you agree, that may go beyond a year. So, I assume, I'm going to question how actively you're being marketed. That's, that's a distinction that we have to make, otherwise it would be a challenge. But that would be urgent, too. It's easy to dodge that, but the, and the answer may lie into a house listed at market based pricing. You know, you have, there is within real estate convictions, you turn to another house that's listed at market based price, based on the houses that surround it, or someone has placed it before they're exorbitantly high priced, and I, again, I don't want to give Louise Awards a stamp, that's for people to do research to figure out how we approach it.
The concern I have is that this, this order, it gets so heavy, and none of us are going to understand it. You have to make decisions about that on the market, I'm going to do it right, I don't want to do justice for everybody and all that, and somehow, keeping it simple enough that it's enforceable, and yet, getting to the root of what we're talking about, so.
Okay, I'll move into a search of time.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Thank you all for your involvement.
Next item is a new visitor, five bid, Holly, do you have a question?
I'm here to counsel tonight to ask for approval to purchase new visitor sites, and to purchase these from Men and I Press. After receiving three bids, Men and I Press came in once again, and they're always better than you, and they provide superior products than they've provided for us in the past. I'm looking at currently purchasing ten thousand bites, and the past purchases, fifteen thousand, that must have been about a year and a half. I'm also looking at some other options for a travel app, potentially, but I don't need to say it's printing costs on them, but that's to be determined and discussed with counsel later date. Questions?
So, this budget, if I have a hundred, that's my budget.
Yes, my current budget for this year, in fact, I have more than that.
So, the request is for thirty-seven eighty-five sixty-seven to Men and I Press.
Thirty-eight seventy-five.
Thirty-eight seventy-five.
Thirty-eight seventy-five sixty-seven, that's a motion to approve those, is that right?
We have a motion and a second, and further discussion.
So, why are we only getting ten thousand?
I can, currently, by now, it only saves me a fraction of a cent for visitor bite chance, we go up to fifteen thousand. There's a huge break, we're at five and ten thousand, about ten cents a bite. So, it's a big money saver to go to ten thousand, but I would like to wait and see what the need is over the next year, so you can go to ten thousand.
Do you look at the Men and I Press, I see ten thousand, is thirty-seven eighty-five sixty-seven?
Yes, thirty-seven eighty-five sixty-seven.
We need to amend the motion in the second. Second amendment?
It's thirty-seven eighty-five sixty-seven.
Three thousand seventy-five.
It's in there, I have a, the administration finance committee where it says thirty.
Betty, we need a second.
Yeah, I want to send back.
You guys are all right with that? Motion amended?
Yes.
Better put on that. Thank you. We're just correcting. Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Gary, now, roll call, please.
Betty? Yes, you know?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Hey, the next item, please. The next item is a marketing services agreement from the Cedar Group, which is a lodging group. Is everybody with us? Okay, we currently charge a six percent transit guest tax to lodging, and with the new vacation rentals that Cedar Group has put together, they are not required to pay those, so, to pay the six percent. So, this, Holly, I know, I've been working with Jay Group on this.
I was just going to mention, you approached the convention, convention minister sphere about this desire for us to market for him. And I told him that currently, the way that our marketing budget is provided, it's solely a hundred percent transit guest tax collection. Vacation rentals by state law are not required to collect, and that, no, they just say, we pay back to the communities. At that time, we listed about it, and we continue to, as I said, we really would like to be able to utilize our services, and we're doing a good job in what we're doing. And I again told him that unfortunately, you know, that would not be a possibility without some type of agreement, that he would be paying some of the, those taxes, in all fairness to other lodging establishments. After agreeing to disagree and then kind of moving our own ways, we've talked about it once more, and, you know, into the agreement that he would like to try to do this. At that time, he asked that I approach Bill and have Bill draw up some type of agreement to be approved by counsel, that would provide him the ability to pay into this, pay the tax of the, the transit guest tax collection. The agreement, as it is written, provides for several things, and it provides that we would assist with this marketing, and doing the same things we would do for other lodging establishments. It also provides that he would have to pay on a quarterly basis, the same way that we collect from the state. It allows us to audit his records at any time that we would feel that the state can do so. It would be a one-year agreement that at either time, the C V B or Cedar Group can pull out of, based on the understanding that at some point in time, neither one of us might want to move ahead with it, and that was the way we felt was best to have that working agreement. It also states that we would not, as a C V B, be responsible in any way, shape, or form for the, his guests, booking, the lodging, and the requirements while they were there, any lawsuit they might have against him, will not be involved in that. The agreement would start from June first of this year, which is his back day, for the agreement to go ahead and begin to participate in this possible listing, counsel. So, if he agrees with that, we'll do that.
Hey, this is a motion to approve this marketing show agreement between Cedar Group and...
We have a motion, we have a second. Second, just several seconds. So, any further discussion?
Just, just one thing, point out, Holly, and I will, this is minor, but you said it's, it's terminable at any time, but it's terminable only on an annual basis, would put it, or betting, yeah.
I think my question would be, and it's probably a silly question, but does this, does this open up our C V B to become a, a marketing consultant or a marketing individual for any business? And is that a, I don't disagree with this, just is there the potential there to say, no, it'd be a lot, be a lot cheaper for me to hire a C V B to market my business, rather than my hiring somebody to manage my website, or my social media, or my brochure?
I think that with our discussion, and I think discussions of, of current future businesses, is that it's not our responsibility, our agreement with him is that we would provide more, we provide for any other lodging establishments. It just enables him to participate in this, in any of us.
In the C V B workings, do we have any parameters about who have to handle business within either the city, on lines or X number of miles from the city to deliver? I think we've talked about it, but I don't know if there's anything in there. I guess the one I'm kind of thinking about is, is maybe Cedar Group.
Yeah, C N W. These are my thoughts on this, and we'll keep this brief, so we can move ahead of it. As we talk about at this stage, the need to provide four hours of something to do for everyone, how would people travel? I have to realistically look at everyone's likes and dislikes as they travel. Some people are interested in motorcycles, and so I include them at Market Motorcycle Museum as part of their tour in Lindesworth. If I can capture overnight stays, and if I can capture some sales tax dollars, and if I can capture meals eaten here, I've won. And so, sometimes it means I market things outside the confines of the city, such as Long Hill Zoo, but if I don't have them here, I utilize them. So, I hate to totally confine what we can do. If I can use the sequel theater, if I can use the opera house in person, if I can use those same package that I offer in Lindesworth, I think it'll benefit us in the end.
I guess I'm thinking specifically about lodging, and do we market, see, in our lodging, in our business?
I provide, no, I do provide in, in a spot in the travel kiosk, they have brochures there, and they're welcome to provide those to us. They do not respond to our visitor's bite, because we don't collect transient guests at the time, so, you know, that would make a difference.
So, if they find out about Cedar Group, could they theoretically come and say, we pay you a hundred dollars, and we be included on the margin? So, they could ask.
Another question, I think the response to that is, what, you're not actually located in Lindesworth.
That's, that's really, I mean, this, this goes back to when we had Chamber of Commerce, and I think we ought to, the thing there was, it can belong to the Chamber of Commerce. And, because we had some lodging outside of Lindesworth that belonged to the Chamber of Commerce.
Because the businesses are located in Lindesworth. Try to, that's our, our location, the owner isn't. So, if there was storefront, I guess that's not an example, if there, if the owner of a hotel paid a manager to live there, but the owner actually lived in New Jersey, would we exempt them? Even if the business resides here, is the tax is going to be here?
Well, you're, you're really...
I think you didn't understand the next question.
You're really getting away from, from the transient guest tax. With, with these particular properties, they are for overnight stays, whether they're short-term or extended. Under the definitions of, of the, of the transient guest tax statute, they do not have to charge the tax because they are two rooms and under. It's over two rooms that you have to charge the tax, or if you allow, if you have extended stays, and there's a stay of, in excess of twenty-eight days.
So, you know your match pays into that, and where it's set back to, I guess it'd be slinked.
It would be slinked, yeah. But it's collected on just those lodging establishments that are, that have a location here in Lindesworth. So, you could have every Marriott frame, every Marriott property that there is located here, they would each have to be collecting that particular transient guest tax. So, what drove this is, the marketing budget is, is driven by transient guest tax, and that's all this is used for. And the transient guest tax is the idea of putting, I mean, they use the term heads-on gas.
Other questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same side? Motion passed?
Next item is a proposal from Wilson Company to conduct a drainage study on the northeast part of Lindesworth, it flooded July twenty-nine, twenty thirteen. Is Gary going to talk about this, Gary?
Well, I'm talking about...
James is going to talk about it. We're, we're... Okay, did it submit, the request amount is twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars. I'll make that a motion.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Hey, what do you say? Hi, Dave. Discussion, starting, correct?
The study is to look at several items, the hydrology, the rain events that occurred prior to the event, the drainage area that drains through that area, also to look at preliminary remediation, and also look at the probability of those events occurring, that event occurring, yeah. But then also examine three remediation options. One is a, a small type of, I'll call it a levy for life, a better word, that sounds a lot bigger than what we're, we're looking at across property, I think the address was in two sixteen, we'll drive on the backside there. Another option is expanding the drainage under the Harfield Street, crossing over the waterway through Westview, and looking at out beyond. And then another option is to look at creating a larger retention, retention detention area at the... at the northwest section of the intersection of Berla and Swenson Street. Also look at potential funding opportunities for those particular remediation options. Originally in committee, it did include that third option, the remediation or retention pond that was asked to be included. So that's the revised amount of 26,400. So that was mentioned in committee, though the possibility would... Yes, but it wasn't included in our closer, yeah.
Questions?
And I'm not finding this clear. Complete services like Senator you want this year.
Okay.
Well, as we discussed in committee, I think this is an absolutely essential thing to be doing, seeing our recent history of water damage. I also think it's very important that we do this to assuage some public opinion. Maybe the public opinion that we're doing the best we can to look into this and try to make that work.
I believe early on when we were looking at the problem that we had down there and we had the early hydrology report that we looked at, we were also, I believe, told at that time that in order for a, a city or county or whoever, a municipal institution to even be considered for any kind of AIDS grants or whatever, you had to be in the flood plain where you had to have a very doggone good reason to show cause why you might have frequent damage to your infrastructure or your, or your residents. Without a study of this nature, we simply wouldn't have a shot or like to stand on five, five hundred, if I remember correctly. But you do have to have some very professional dogs. And, and that the, the, the land that did flood here was not, at that time, defined as being in the flood plain. So, yeah, we, we all have a sense that these two and three hundred, four hundred, five hundred year rains seem to be coming more frequently. And so this may change, this may change the story. And it's going to take people of this caliber and these kind of credentials to tell us if that's the case.
I remember years ago, it was then Wilson Company did do a study for the city on Havre. So, and this new study is going to be called the Lindesburg Northwest Drainage Study. Is that correct? So, anyway.
Just building a new city.
All right, just out of line.
I'm looking at this agreement for professional engineering services. And I think the important thing is, is that within this company, these are the same people that have studied it before because there are overlapping issues. So, um, $26,000 plus is a lot of money, but I think it's, has, I remember it's a lead that's...
Additional questions?
I would just add that I agree. I think we owe it to the assistance of this community. It was a year ago, we had this flood on water, just under the bridge, so to speak. But we owe the assistance to look into this, and I think hiring someone like this to, to look at it is important.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion points? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
WR?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Um, last issue is the Substrom Conference Center boardroom furnishings. We have a proposal here, um, for $1,501 to buy these things. Does there motion to be approved now? And who is that? To, to, Bill Cans?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. If you spend $1,501 to build cans, do you furnish the boardroom?
Is this the downstairs or the upstairs?
Upstairs.
Upstairs?
We moved both downstairs and upstairs, and so we cleaned that area. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Becky? Yes. Ego?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
WR?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
No others there, utilities committee?
Uh, for the utilities committee, we have a proposal to, uh, that has to do with the electricity we get and, and the new things that are happening. And a proposal that Greg is looking at to, to give us the lowest rate and the best possible service. Expand on that a little bit. Well, I read it all again this morning, and that's when I said, ask Greg.
It's a joint planning effort for a, a long-term power supply. We had actually sent in an indication of interest for 2,800 kilowatts of baseload and 1,200 kilowatts of intermediate resource needs. Some other options have been available. Some people in the committee want to have the optionality of, of of choosing a particular resource, which could be a nuclear, coal, natural gas, wind, or a reciprocating engine. I still recommend we, we do the 2,800 kilowatts baseload, 1,200 kilowatts of the intermediate load because that's a portfolio approach. And, and the idea behind the portfolio approach is you help stabilize your costs. Because you're, if you go with, with gas, natural gas has a high level of volatility from, from an energy side. When you get into coal, it has high capital costs, but the fuel right now is extremely cheap. But that doesn't mean that the continued, um, regulations are going to drive that cost up. Nuclear is a very expensive, uh, capital cost. Extremely cheap, um, fuel cost. But again, it's subject to regulation changes, licenses, and it, it could cause some volatility in pricing. So by, by bringing the, the different opportunities together, you're looking at, um, kind of stabilizing the price of work. If you're only one resource and something happens, then you're, you're going, it's not going to be stabilized, um, over the long term. I would also recommend looking at, um, 200 kilowatts of, of wind. Wind is, while still an intermediate resource, um, is from, I mean, costs have come down significantly because there's no capital cost or, or capacity charge involved with, with, uh, wind. Both costs for, for wind, when you get it, is anywhere from 2.8 to 3.1 cents, so it's extremely inexpensive.
Greg, do we have to stipulate that in our portfolio?
If we want to look at...
Do we want to add wind here?
Yes.
If, so, um, was that it? Anyway, um, indication of interest for power supply resource portfolio?
Yes.
We, we will check baseload portfolio, because we want to be checking.
Uh, well, actually, what it says intermediate up there is really the, the, that baseload would include nuclear coal and natural gas in the baseload. And then adding the wind resource in there. Yeah, so it would be a total of 4,200 kilowatts, we'd be looking at.
And that's, that is the decision we have to make by July 15th?
Yes.
To send this on to hand here?
Yes. And it doesn't commit us to those resources, it just moves it to the next phase. From a cost standpoint, we're looking at about, um, $3 per megawatt, so our cost plus our pro-rata share of transmission study. So we'd be looking at about $12,600 to move into the next phase. For a power supply study standpoint, that's incredibly inexpensive. But I will also throw out, one of the things I want to bring in the budget work session, is the idea of us looking at owning some of our own generation. Because with what we pay right now, um, under our current contract with West Star, we can borrow the money for half of what we're paying for capacity and increase our reliability. We've had horrible reliability problems, especially in fact, we meet with West Star tomorrow to address that issue again. So I don't have the proposal together yet, but I would like to roll that out so that we can get it into the 2000 particular year.
I was going to ask, if that, if that sub-generation will eliminate some of the algorithms?
Well, put it this way, we wouldn't be out for four hours or two hours or an hour in time. It would take whatever time it took to, to ramp those things up. And it all depends on what, anywhere from 15 minutes to, to half an hour.
Does everybody understand what we're looking at here? Forty, 200? Is the number right, Greg?
Yes.
And it includes, what, nuclear, coal, natural gas, and 200 of wind?
Yes.
That makes it only 200 total.
Yeah, so it'd just be baseload portfolio of 4,000 kilowatts and 200 of wind.
Okay. Any other questions to be answered before we move to the floor? Same, uh, do you want to roll call here?
I don't have a second. Why don't we have a motion?
Well, we probably need that before we do roll call.
I would make a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion, but anyway, I'll second it or whichever, committee.
So we have a motion and a second, huh?
Do I need to prepare?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
You know, on this one, let's do a roll call.
Uh, Becky? Yes. Ego?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
WR?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
As far as others go on the committee, all I would like to say, unless something else gets set that up, I am tremendously appreciative of Greg's work on all of this, and his outside work on this committee. And it's keeping us on the forefront, I feel, of what's happening here in this power system. And it's just so tremendous work to do.
Yeah, that's it. Moving on to...
This is a German.
What? So it's a marks committee?
Uh, first item is the request for sidewalk waiver for property located at 214 South Cherry. The owners are adding on to their house and by ordinance that when this was, the permit was issued, this living space, there's no sidewalks exist on the property, they must be installable. If the sidewalks are not compliant, they must be replying to blocks. Apparently, there are no sidewalks on that block on either side of the street. So I would like to make a motion that you approve the sidewalk waiver request from, uh, George, that's 214 South Cherry.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
My, uh, my feeling of this is we either ought to enforce the ordinance that we have or throw it out.
I agree.
And we just keep giving waivers and waivers and waivers. And we, it, it's a meaningless ordinance.
Citizens repeatedly come and request sidewalks. And currently, the way that Lindesburg says we're going to get sidewalks is by having the owners put the sidewalks in when they change the footprint of their, um, other house, right? But that's how we do that, we do none. We've got budgeted to put in sidewalks regardless. And yet, we continue as David has said, we continually waive these. And so everyone says there's no other sidewalks, and there never will be any other sidewalks.
David, now, I guess I would like to add to that then, since we're just considering this waiver, this request. And we concentrate on that, and if we want to get rid of the ordinance, then we take that up at, in committee and discuss it at that point.
It's a good time to, and to remind everybody that this is an important thing to talk about.
Can we put that on agenda for committee now?
Okay.
To be on the trigger of granting this request, I think right now it would be a sidewalk to nowhere. Which Tom Kellman has told me at this point, it's probably a good decision to write this for us.
Additional discussion?
Well, I would agree with, with WR on this. The addition is on the west side house sidewalks. And there's no other sidewalks in that neighborhood, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere. And it's not as if there's construction in that area in the front that I just don't see a need to require a sidewalk for that.
I think that this is a good plan if you're waiting for years for everybody to remodel their house and have to build a sidewalk. It's not good a plan for building a sidewalk down the block.
Additional discussion? Mary Dunn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Thank you.
Just for clarification, for committee, are we talking just about the sidewalk waiver ordinance or, or the requirement of changing the living footprint of a home that requires a sidewalk? Or are we talking about, for instance, that our subdivision regulations on new developments require sidewalks to go in on both sides of the street? Because that first house is going to have a sidewalk to nowhere.
Dr. Ollinay?
I think we need to talk about the whole subject.
Then if you're talking about the subdivision regulations, that has to go through planning and zoning because that's their, their first.
I think it would be a good educational opportunity for this council to hear a little bit of the history of where we have gotten to this place. It's not as lackluster as the cities. And so I think if we, we want to move it out of, whatever the decisions are, the conversation is, and move it out of there and goes back to the plans and mission. But I think we just, we need to understand, we have a lot of work, and I'm not sure that we all truly understand why we have.
Does that a conversation we have, does it maybe?
I think so.
Okay. That word? Okay.
Okay. Uh, the next item is the Swenson Park Banshee Roof.
Everybody should have a new copy of this, this update.
Greg, Gary?
That's the new price. Alan Weiss, I kind of raised the price a couple of times. But I do have three bids, Alan Weiss, I'm tracking the low bidder at $5,061.37. Roofing Services Unlimited is out of new. Uh, they were recommended by Ray Roofing to do a chingle, actual chingle roof, to do that. And then King Roofing, Salina, uh, you can see the number. Uh, I have, uh, folks, if you want to look through them, they're all very similar.
Dabels, dabels.
Dabels, dabels. Comfortable, that. Alan, perhaps being local as a manager, I'm, I'm surprised.
Rick, do you want to get a motion and...
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve Alan Weiss' contracting, we're down to $5,061.37.
Second. Moved and seconded and addition discussion? There you go. No questions. Well, you have a motion and a second. You're the second to the motion.
Will this be done right away?
Yeah, as far as the...
Is that just for the Broadway people that can use it?
I haven't heard of it.
I don't know, just today, Matt asked me and I said, "I don't really think about it."
We have three layers of roof, but you know, there are nails that you could see through.
But is there any possibility of, if they start right away, they can do them before the residential side waves?
Um, I guess, what I recall is the concern that it was apples to apples bid because there was so much disparity. And there wasn't any mention of flat sheek or guttering, as I recall.
Alan has it covered.
All right.
Is there any guttering on the...
That was a question.
There's not actual guttering on that side, so I just believe they have... Yep. Just any questions?
Oh, I was just going to add the settlement from the insurance complex, 55,000.
Now put guttering on that. Additional questions? Discussion? Roll call please.
Kelly? Yes. Betty? Yes. Lynn?
Yes.
W.R.?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes. I have one question, Banjo. Just leave the city on the banjo. Are we or have we ever discussed putting this on the standard of service work list?
I think we've talked about it, yes. It's been a while. It's been a hard conversation about it over the years and, and thought, and it sounded it would be a good idea because it could provide heritage trust on the...
Well, that's, that's what I was told to me. And so I said, "Well, I'm not sure where that was." And is that process?
We had this form of start, but I think it's something we had to do. I think after the Sunstrom building, it was probably the smarter way to do it then.
Well, I mean, we're not a client. It was just given, is it a state or a national?
State.
Destination.
State historical.
State historical, yeah. So, I think this discussion we need to get...
Well, I can tell you, from the standpoint, from, as a minimally owned facility, you can't get federal tax credits or state tax credits, you know, so being on the national registry, value there doesn't come with really dollars, it just comes with the listing.
Unless you take tax credits, there's no funding for any of this work.
Well, it didn't say that. You could, you could get state tax credits and you can get historic preservation money, but, but if it's in the hands of a private entity, they can get state tax credits and federal tax credits at the same time.
Because, that, Chris Davis was here, because it is a WPA project, it comes with its own set of eligibility for lots of different things. So I just think it's a probably a required...
I agree, I think so.
Are there any cons to doing it here?
Or?
Any cons to doing it?
No, I don't see us wanting to modify the, the architecture or modernize the facility under what I can be for performance.
Okay. Just want to show qualified for delivery.
Okay.
So now I would say...
All right, thank you. Six to Parks, any other, other bills or, other safety committee?
I'm a bit confused by the agenda because the first item is the Harrison Cole's, do you want to change? There was consensus among the committee to not move that forward, believing that the direction of council for the development of Harrison Cole Corridor, when it included increased pedestrian traffic and that an increase of five miles per hour was not significant. So I'm, I'm not clear, I'm not clear if there is group council action required on item number one, so I'm looking for some direction. Okay.
I will have Billy's report.
So, um...
I'm not sure I know the question you were asking, Billy.
Do you need to do any more additions since the committee voted for nothing to, they said they did look at...
I don't see what I should do.
Yeah, so, no action, no action at all.
And then on number two, I don't know whether this or other, the only thing I would say was that it was a consensus of the committee that we were supposed to keep in foul, actually go back to committee after, after staff reviews some of the questions that were brought to the surface during committee. So I don't know that takes action here.
No.
Okay, so I don't have any...
Let's go, Al. Any other others? Betty?
I don't have any.
Okay. Let's move on to item number nine, purchase order.
I don't have other others. I don't know if, if everybody realizes that this is the 25th anniversary of the Women in Kansas, holding it in here and I think Mayor...
July 25th.
Yeah, that's a very, you guys would...
Sorry, I missed that.
But you're not going to be here.
No, I'm going to be there, so I'm sorry I missed that.
Oh.
I didn't mention that. That is a wonderful event. It's a shame for us.
Kind of same happening in the most prominent day, so it's kind of... Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Yes, that is a wonderful event and I said, I said that I think it was a single for, for the, thank you, going back here, Michael D.C. and Tom Terry, he's now with J.O., the other ones there. Moving on to item number nine, consideration of purchase ordinance, purchase order ordinance 4875.
Motion for proof?
Okay, a motion and a second. Moving second and discussion. Roll call please.
Betty? Kelly? Lynn? I'm sorry, I got just wrong. Betty? Yeah, Kelly? Yeah, Cindy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
W.R.?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you all for listening. Item number 10, consideration of payroll ordinance 4873 and 4874 where you desire.
Google.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Sir.
Moving second, if any further discussion? Roll call please.
Betty? Yes. Eno?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
W.R.?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 11 and others. Last call for others, item number 12, a German. Do you have a motion? Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Do you want your evening? Keep in mind the dates we talked about, get those on your calendars, please.